Okay, I am joined by Councilman Ken Smith, District Three. Good to have you here and thanks so much for doing this.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
As we were.
Working through some of those struggles we had earlier.
There's always a challenge with Zoom. I think people understand that these days for sure.
Always.
Well, let's get started. We've got a few questions just to, I'm sure most of the constituents know you, but it's always good for them to hear from you again about kind of your thoughts on certain things. So first off, what qualifies you for another term? And what are you hoping will be your highest priority in the next term?
So qualifies is the work that I've done over the last eight years. I believe that what I ran on initially back in 2013 when I was elected, I stuck to, I got done. I continue to stick to that. The priorities really haven't changed. Of course, we have some nuances, but for District Three in general, a lot of the priorities are very much the same from public safety, economic developments, and into roads and infrastructure. And those are all things that we've worked really, really hard on over the years. So those are things I plan to continue to work on, you know, as needed in the district, among the million other things that don't fit into those three categories. But those are definitely going to be the top priorities that we work on. And over the next year, you know, I'd like to say 90 days, but realistically, probably over the next year, a significant focus is going to be on relief from everything we've gone through with COVID. We don't know if we're really going to get back to work. We just, nobody knows for sure what's going to happen. And part of that is, we don't know the impact it's going to have on our budget yet. You know, we've seen some numbers from last year's budget, you know, expected to be down eight or nine million, I think. And then, oh, that could be a lot higher. It could be less. Again, there's so many unknowns right now to see how that's going to really impact the city being able to move forward in our, from a funding status as well. So understanding the budget, understanding the priorities, understanding where we can and cannot squeeze a dime out of something is going to be really, really important moving forward in this next budget cycle, as is with every changeover in mayor. When you're elected in early March and quite often a base this large is going to be a runoff. So then you've got April before you really make a decision and then take office. The budget is due by the end of June. So there's not a whole lot of time for a new mayor to think through it. And so we'll probably have a continuation budget for a few months. And people that understand that process, again, going to be very important. Been through it a few times, so we will most likely have a continuation budget to get, allow the new administration to determine whether or not the budget in its current format is one that that administration wants to use going forward as well.
I did have a few questions for you specific to the budget, so that's a great segue. As we near the, a year, a year since the virus hit Chattanooga businesses and individuals, especially the businesses within the city have struggled due to COVID-19. How would you provide aid to those businesses and families hit hardest by the pandemic's economic impact? And are there programs already in place that you'd want to keep or others that you'd want to add?
Sure. So I'll answer the second one first. Yes, been there, done that. That was one of my top focuses when this hit. Worked very hard to reduce the impact as much as possible on businesses. The first thing, everybody shuts down. Well, again, that goes back to the unknown. We just didn't know how bad it was going to be. But I was also out there on the very front saying, let's not, let's not go too far to the extreme to when recovery is impossible. Not just for the individual, but the business. And when a, when a business can't recover, the people that work there can't recover. When they don't have income, now you've got mortgages, you've got rents, you've got all the downstream effects of a single business suffering because of COVID. So one of my priorities and focuses immediately was to look at how can we help allow businesses to continue to operate, allow people to continue to earn an income. And one of those, something that you don't think about. When we first talked about restaurants, well, you're allowed to do to-go orders. No-in, no-in dining, that was great. That was a conversation we had. But it was also just a really quick decision on how to handle that. What didn't, wasn't thought of and what I brought to the table afterwards, and thankfully, we were able to get at it, is we've got other businesses that, let, take a brewery. By permit law, they can't sell beer without selling food as a to-go or anything else. So we've got businesses whose product goes stale. It can't sit, it can't be stored. They literally will not be able to operate or even survive into the future. So worked very hard with the administration for an update to an executive order that did allow businesses like that, despite restrictions in a local permit, to be able to continue to conduct business and just sell in a different way. That kept people employed. It kept those businesses open. It kept our local economy flowing as much as possible. So these are all things I've already done. These are all things I will continue to do. And it's having that level of experience and understanding both business and what's possible from a government standpoint that I think is really going to be critical in this next year. Because again, we don't know. Is it going to get better? Yes, we hope so, but we don't know. We could get hit with another wave that was worse than the first. And we need to have some experience on how to, how to respond to that and ensure that people are able to continue to make a living and adjust to this new environment, this, this new world that we're all having to live in.
You mentioned off the top paving and transportation, which I know has been a passion project for you and the community, the Northgate project that I think early on in your, your first term you tackled. But paving and transportation, all these years later consistently ranks as top of a citizen's concern list according to annual studies by the city. So what transportation or infrastructural goals would you have for this next term?
Same type of goals. They just get bigger. The first, when I first ran, our paving budget was $1.7 million. And just to put that in perspective, that people don't understand it, our paving, our road asset was about a $2 billion asset at the time. It's about two and a half billion, probably more than that now. And only 1.7 million was being allocated to maintain it. And an asset that gets heavily used and abused by cars and weather every single day, day in, day out. So it was just ridiculous, the amount of money that we were spending to maintain that level of asset. So number one goal, increase that funding right away. And I'll just back up for a second. To make it worse, in early 2000s, you know, the, the base resource, be it asphalt, just, just some of the, the core materials for paving increased 400%. It was then, I think by 2010. So what didn't go up was how much we were spending. So the cost is increasing by three to 400%, but our, our spend was not. So not only are we not spending much, but we're also getting way less for it. So the problem got huge, really, really fast. So there's not a way to just turn around and put $200 million into paving, unfortunately. I would love to. So it is still chipping away at it. So as it is now, through the years of continuing fight it, we've increased that budget to over $8 million now from 1.7. It probably needed to be 10 million back then, just to keep up with our, our regular, let's say, good roads and some of the ones that needed to be repaved. So it's a much higher number now to continue to maintain and then repave. But we're getting there. It, we're going in the right direction. And it's something that, that people want. They, they deal with it every day. And frankly, that's, that's what we're supposed to be providing as a city is our essential services. And roads and infrastructure, while it's never thought of unless it impacts you, are a huge piece of that. So one of the things that a few of us have talked about, there's never really been a desire by the administration or the council as a whole to do it, is to implement a standard percent of the operating budget to paving every single year. Because right now, it's really at the whim of the administration. If they decided to present a budget with 2 million paving, we could oppose it as the council. We can insist that more money goes in there, but we can't spend it. We are not a spending authority. We are a legislative body. So it's very much a collaborative effort. However, if we are able to legislate a base amount that must be spent in paving every single year, then at least we have something solid to go on despite who is in the mayor's administration at that time. So thinking through some of those things to ensure that we're going to continue to be able to put the, I would say adequate, but maybe not even adequate yet, but at least getting to the point where we are putting more money into roads and be able to do more projects across the entire city is definitely a goal and something I'm hoping to work towards in this next administration and next council.
Talk a little bit about minimum wage. The city labor unions and many activists have supported a $15 an hour minimum wage for city employees specifically, which Mayor Burke had intended to begin implementing prior to COVID hitting. Do you support this or any other specific pay increase plans for city employees and why or why not?
Day one, we said our city employees are our number one asset. It doesn't matter what your priorities are. It doesn't matter what you want to do for a city. If you don't have the people to be able to carry those things out, then you, you can never reach your priorities and be successful. We shouldn't have city employees that are being required to take care of so many other people in our city that can't take care of their own families. So there is a lot of work that can be done and has been done, mind you. This isn't, this isn't a, you know, been neglected for a long time. There have been step increases, there have been pay increases, there have been pay plan changes and adjustments. We've done a lot of work already to get to a better place. Are we where we want to be? No, not yet. But we're getting there and we've shown some of that work and some of that progress. I made a lot of, a lot of waves early on, even with some of the bonuses yearly to give to, to city employees because it was based on a percentage. And, and I would argue that the top level, be it the mayor's administration, the entire staff, were getting the same percentage as the, the lower paid workers. And so naturally, by percentage, it's a lot more money. But it doesn't mean that their job was any more important than the person that was, say, out there on the street. And so my argument was, we needed to increase the amounts that were taking place at the lower end of the pay scale and not be as concerned about the ones at the upper, and I mean, the high end of the pay scale for what it is that they do. I'm not saying it's not important, but there is a definite shift. And the problem with that is compaction. We can raise $15 an hour. And let's say it was, I think I'd, I'd ran some of my own numbers at one point in time and worked with finance. I mean, it's 16, 20 million dollars. I mean, it's a big number and that's reoccurring every single year. That's just one piece. That's getting up to, say, $15 an hour is a substantial amount of money. The problem is, is compaction at that point where what about now when that $15 an hour for that person, now they're making more than their supervisor? Well, you can't do that. So now you raise the supervisor. Well, now the supervisor's making more than that. It's a stair-step effect all the way through the top. So while some people make it sound like, all you got to do is just give $15 an hour, I understand that. But it's a larger picture that needs to be addressed. It's not just what would it take to get to $15 an hour? It was what would it take to balance out the pay plan all the way through? So that all of your different levels within that pay plan are matched up. Some, some positions have two, three, four, five different levels within them that are different pay rate based on experience. All those would need to be adjusted if you're going to take the base to 15. So it's a monumental task, but it is one I think we can achieve with the right amount of planning and diligence and frankly, dedication to making it happen.
In 2019, 40% of Chattanooga's households are housing cost burden, which, which basically means they pay more than 30% of their income for housing and may struggle to afford other necessities. How would you address affordable housing specifically in your district?
Something that I have been doing since day one. And I will say, affordable housing as a request, it's a concern of my constituents. It's not a much of a request within my district. There are a few that are supported out here. I've supported them. I've supported federal aid, which has to flow through the city in order to fix up some of those facilities to be used for that purposes. I've supported those. I've pushed them through and they've been successful. But citywide, there are some districts that need it and are asking for it, I should say, even more than others in some areas of our city. And I've worked with those, the representatives of those districts to ensure that those projects were successful and that they did take place. I believe District Eight has 15 different projects that are for affordable housing and the majority of those, we put in. So it is something that is being done. It is being worked on. And I will continue to do that. I will continue to support my colleagues and my constituents as those projects come up, where it is that we can interject ourselves into the conversations to ensure that any additional funds, again, being a pass through for federal dollars and things like that, I am, I am ready to be there and, and help because there, it is a dire situation for many of our residents. And just touching on that a little bit, Kelly, you know, I was the one that put through the senior tax freeze specifically for this reason. We, we hear affordable and we think just families. There are senior citizens, fixed incomes that are also seeing the effect of honestly, our success in Chattanooga in a growing city. And naturally, home prices go up and we have a lot of seniors that get priced out on fixed income. So that was one of my champion cases. I got it pushed through. I got it approved. It's part of what we do in the city now, specifically to protect people from this type of thing happening and allow them to stay in their homes. So these are, that's part of what I've already done to address it and I will continue to support those initiatives going forward.
Talk a little bit about public safety. Last fall, shootings in Chattanooga were up by 20% from the same time in 2019 and higher than any time in the last five years. How would you work as a council member, along with the rest of the council, to lower crime in the area and in your district?
I wish I had a simple answer to that. I think if anybody knew how to lower crime, we would have done it a million times over. There's a lot that has been tried by the Burke administration to address crime. And while we can say we've reduced significantly gang violence, crime and shootings are still occurring. There is still somebody pulling a trigger. There is still somebody gotten hit by a bullet. Whether it's a gang member or not, it is still a serious issue that we need to be addressing in the city. So some of the steps that I've been active in taking is supporting, not just the police department from a staffing perspective, but from a technology perspective. So the Arctic, the Real Time Intelligence Center, we've invested fully in that so that we can better communicate about crimes and be able to solve, frankly, a lot of these crimes faster than they were. We had cold cases stacked up beyond belief just because of the lack of technology and communication between different departments to be able to help solve a lot of those crimes. So that's one tool we're able to put in. We also invested in high-end ballistic software so that we can track what takes place from these scenes and tie guns to these events and then be able to tie it to people so that we can close these cases and actually find the people that are perpetrating the crimes better and faster. So there are some things that we can do from that regard. Overall, it's a, it's a systematic problem as well that there, there is no single answer to. We've got to do better to make sure that people have opportunities to provide for themselves. We need to make sure that, that they feel good about the neighborhoods they live in. And the city can invest in those things. We can, we can help make sure the police have the resource to prevent and solve those crimes when they happen. But at the same time, we need to be focused on, again, you mentioned paving. Something as simple as paving a neighborhood road, putting in sidewalks and streetlights improves that area significantly from a safety standpoint as well. So there are infrastructure needs that actually improve public safety. And we got to remember those when we talk infrastructure. It's not just about paving. It's about improving public safety at the same time when we're willing to step back and look at the whole picture. So there's more of that type of thing that I would like to see done in a lot of our neighborhoods across Chattanooga.
Okay. Many have, oh, I skipped one. Activists spent the summer protesting police brutality across the country and here in Chattanooga, demanding defunding or divesting from the police department. Would you consider defunding or divesting from CPD for reform? In what, in what other ways, if any, would you consider law enforcement reform here in Chattanooga?
I don't support defunding at all. That's no surprise. I was very clear about that through the entire process. And I will say this though, our police department, I don't know that there's any officer that would tell you that they think that from the days of the first police departments, that they would have to deal with everything that they deal with today. I think that is a fair statement. A lot of what came up had to do with mental health and situations like that is an officer, the person, the perfect person to respond to some of those cases? No. Were they ever intended to? Absolutely not. The problem is this, unless you've taken the time to meet with all those other organizations, as I have, you take Joe Johnson, the Health of Mental Health, social workers, I've got many that are friends. I sat down with them and asked them, tell me what you think, because you're being presented as a solution, but I'm not hearing any of you come forward and agree to that. So what's missing? Because obviously, that's an important piece at the table. We can't just say, give it to them. What, what piece is missing? And they were all very clear that anytime they respond to situations, they will never go without an officer. And part of that has to do with, who gets to be the person to decide what type of case and what type of response is needed? Is it just the person on the phone calling? How do they know whether it's violent or not? The person answering the call, they don't know whether it's a violent situation or not. So while I think that there are ways that we can work toward coming to a better solution for some of those situations, and I think that that is a real conversation we need to be having. However, it's not as easy as just flip the switch, give this money to social workers and send them on their way to certain calls. It's a, again, it's a more of a systematic approach. We have to know which calls to send different response units to. And there is not a process in place currently that would allow us to do that safely. So we've got officers that are concerned on many calls that they go on. Imagine somebody who's just walking up to a door that doesn't have any kind of training or any way to protect themselves. We have to consider the entire picture and make sure that organizations like that, that are very important and they do go on calls. It's not like we don't do that. But we need to make sure that everybody's on board with talking through a complete approach to this. There are some cities I've heard that have been successful with some of these programs. I'm not saying we don't need to look into it, but I am not interested in defunding the police. Just flip it overnight, defund the police and we'll suddenly have a solution. It, it doesn't work that way. It's not going to work that way. I wouldn't support it, not, not once would I, would I entertain that. But I would like to have the conversation about what other options or opportunities are there for our officers to stay focused on what they need to be. Crime specifically, crime-related and cases that are not necessarily crime, not necessarily violent. How can we better serve those citizens another way? I am all about that conversation, but not at the, at the cost of defunding the police to get there. No, absolutely not.
Many have questioned the conduct of activists given vandalism, disruption to businesses, confrontations with police. Others have criticized law enforcement for restricting access to public areas, surveillance of activists on private property and the nature of some arrests. If similar unrest came up during your next term, how would you weigh restrictions for activists and police presence? And would you have done anything differently from this term?
I can't say that I wouldn't have done anything differently because that's saying that we, we knew exactly how to deal with every situation and in many of them, we've never had to face them before. So we always learn from things when they occur. And we had months, it seems, of protests in downtown Chattanooga. That's a long time. So to say that, for anybody to say that they were not offered or allowed certain opportunities to protest in a peaceful fashion, it's, it's just not true. I mean, we had streets blocked off. So we have people trying to get from A to B citizens that can't because police, you know, streets are blocked off for the protesters over a long period of time. So there were plenty of opportunities presented to allow protesters to peacefully protest. And I support that 110%. They should be allowed to peacefully protest. There's a lot of businesses that suffered because of it that reached out to me, like, nobody can get to my business. That's a problem. That's a problem. Those businesses don't need to be suffering at the hand of night after night after night. So how else can we provide the opportunity for people to be able to peacefully protest without negatively impacting businesses that may have nothing to do with what it is they're protesting about? So it, it is about being fair, both to the protesters and their right to protest and to other individuals who may have nothing to do with it, being negatively impacted by it as well. So whether that's the routes, the streets, the parks, you know, whatever we have as open spaces that we can make available for those types of events, we need to be looking at being able to do that. And they were able to use Coolidge Park. Mind you, Kelly, a, an organization that said, hey, I want to throw a party in the park, has to go get a permit. They have to get a permit. They have to pay for it. They have to get a permit to use power. The protesters were never required to get a permit. They were allowed to do what they were doing because it was a protest. There's plenty of people that don't think that's fair. So there were spaces made available to allow those things to take place in a peaceful fashion. And I think, again, it is important that we allow those to take place and allow people to be heard. There's probably some better ways that we can handle it and manage it moving forward to ensure, again, the, the negative impacts of those things unintended, not saying they were purposeful, but unintended negative consequences of some of those things with businesses. And even people protesting peacefully in their mind is not necessarily peaceful to other people. And they deserve the same amount of respect. So yeah, I think there's some lessons learned and we can definitely look at that. But stopping somebody's right to peacefully protest? No, I'm, I'm not in favor of that at all.
Let's talk about the actual council meetings, which you've, you've got plenty of experience with at this point. The question is, do you support current city council restrictions on public input, input during meetings? And would you change these policies or make other efforts to encourage public input at those meetings?
I don't know that I would change anything where we are now. We, at one point, my first term, allowed a longer speaking time. And then the council chose to dial that in. I didn't vote for that. I didn't vote for, for reducing the, the speaking time. Then we also allowed, we had rules in place that you could only speak twice in a, in a four-week period or in a one-month period. We took that out to provide more opportunity for people to speak. What people don't understand when you hear them say, you know, you're, you're preventing my right. We are not obligated to allow public comment at our meetings, despite what it may, you know, look like or people may say. There's nowhere in law that it states that the public must be able to speak at these meetings. That said, it is incredibly important for me that we do allow that opportunity. So by doing so and taking off some of the restrictions that we did have, people can speak about topics the night of, the week before, the week after. And it's, it's a lot looser, the ability to speak to the council than it ever has been in the past. So we are more open and available than we ever have been, honestly, in the past as far as the amount of time and opportunity to address the council. So I don't, I don't know off the top of my head how I, how I would change that at this point. But we have been open and we have opened additional sessions if necessary so that we can hear from the people that, that want to address the council. Even on Zoom, the governor's order did not in any way whatsoever require us to allow public input. But it was one of the first things, you know, I, I had to figure that whole thing out. We were the first body that did it. And I managed a lot of that right out of the gate, still do. And one of the big pieces for me was how do we allow public input? Because I am not okay without moving forward, allowing that to be part of our meetings. And we've done so and we've done so very well and it's worked out. So despite the Zoom bombing and all those kinds of things, you know, we had, had a little glitch in the beginning. Had to fix that one, but otherwise, it's, it's worked out really well for us to still be open. But the other thing that I do want to say is, people that say they just want to come and address the council, council members are open 24/7 to their constituents. You don't have to come to a council meeting to be heard. If you come to a council meeting because you're not being heard, that's different. But council members are always available to their constituents. If you have something, reach out. It doesn't have to wait to a council meeting. So it's not like that's the only opportunity for somebody in the public to ever be heard by their elected official. You should feel welcome to reach out to them anytime, not just when they're meeting.
Few other quick questions for you before we let you go today. Have you received the COVID-19 vaccine? And if not, will you when it's available to you?
I have not. I did test positive later last year and had, but had no symptoms. I was completely symptom-free. No headaches, no nothing. So it's just one of those weird things. Some people hurt really bad from it. Some people die from it. And some people don't even know that they have it. So for me personally, if that's how my body responds to it, then I would rather people that are more likely to suffer from that be the first ones to get vaccinated. I have not been vaccinated. I have not seek vaccinations. And I will wait till my turn and I prefer my turn to be at the very end. I have, I just feel like I have been through it and I would be happy to go through it 10 more times than to see one person die from it because they had to wait in line to get their vaccine. So no, I, I am not in any hurry to get it. I would prefer so many other people that need it long before I did, before it's made available to me.
What should the relationship between the mayor and the city council look like? And will you cultivate relationships with the new administration?
Oh, absolutely. Collaboration is, is number one and what's needed. You know, what I expressed before, just a little bit on the budget, is, is a great example. You know, the mayor presents a budget, the council approves it or disapproves it. Well, you have to work together either way. Because again, the council putting money or forcing changes to a budget does not in any way force the mayor to spend that money. And the city council cannot. So you have to have a very collaborative approach with the mayor. I would like to see it improved. I have had a good relationship with the administration, specifically for big projects I've needed. But you know, there was many times we didn't see eye to eye, you know, when, when it came to funding and priorities in my district. And some things took me three years to get solved, some reason because they were that complex. Like you mentioned, North Point Boulevard. Like you mentioned North Point Boulevard, three years I worked on that, but there were a lot of moving pieces and the administration did work with me to make and get that happen. I couldn't get some of these major projects done without collaborating with the mayor and the administration. So nobody should think that they can walk in to a city council job and make things happen. You need at least four other people to agree with you and the administration. You must be able to collaborate and work with people in order to get anything done.
Would you support public money for a new Chattanooga Lookout Stadium?
No.
Easy enough. Uh, well, my last question for you is just what else do you want voters to know about you?
You know, I'm going to continue to do exactly what I'm doing and if I need to do something better, let me know. If there's anything that I can do to help you, let me know. Uh, I have always said that. I've said it since day one. I can't solve everything. Um, but there are a lot of things that I can help and can do. Uh, and, but I'm going to be honest with you. If you call me and ask me for something that is just not anything that I can impact or that I can do, I'm going to tell you I can't. Not because I won't, not because I'm not willing to try. I've done it long enough. I know what I can get done. I know how I can get it done. And I can get it done quickly if I can in most cases. It's about knowing how to navigate within the system, who to go to, what level of priority you can put on different things and ensuring that you have a voice as a constituent all the way up to again, the purse strings which reside in the mayor's office. They do not reside with the city council. So you, again, you must be able to collaborate and work uh, through all the branches of government like that in order to get these things done. And I've done that. Uh, I hope to continue to do that. Um, I've gotten a lot of great things done in the district, big projects, everything that I, I made promises on back in 2013. I've done them all and then some, and I will continue to do that uh, and hopefully add to that list, uh, not just of things that have been done, but more and more to do. Uh, it's, it's great. I love it. It's an honor to, to serve uh, and, and I hope to be able to do that for another four years, Kelly.
All right, Councilman Ken Smith from the third district uh, running for reelection and election day is just right around the corner. So thank you for taking the time with us today. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kelly. Have a great day.